Good evening, welcome to regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Today's date is February 17th, 2016. Can we have a roll call, please?
Planning Commissioners Astorian.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Chairperson Lee.
Here. Can we have a report regarding posting of agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, February 10th, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you. Can I have Commissioner Astorian need a pledge of allegiance?
Gladly. Please follow me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for approval of minutes, I'm gonna hand over the cable to Mr. Astorian because he was not here last time and then we were here, so...
So seeking for a motion to approve the minutes for last meeting?
So moved. And second. Thank you. Okay, oral communications. Any discussion limit to the items not part of this agenda. If, you know, speakers wish to come and speak, you are limited to five minutes. So do we have any speakers for oral communications?
I have no cards.
Okay, we have none. So we go to zoning appeals. I see none in the new business, none in the old business. Next item, Planning Commission items. New business done, the old business. Item number one, the location is 4,000 Bouquet Street. This hearing is continued from November 18th, 2015. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yeah, it's a hearing for standards variance case number PVAR 1500289 and ridgeline, or actually it's a ridgeline stream exception case number PRBSE 1500291. The applicant is Ed Hagobian and the owner is George Anatablian. It's zoned R1R2, restricted residential flurry ratio District 2. This project is originally included a request to deviate from a 15-foot height limit for an accessory building, which would be a garage, a 15-foot street front setback, a 10-foot interior setback, and also requested an exception to Title 16, which limits the height of any buildings to 15 feet on lots with secondary ridgelines in conjunction with the construction of a new one-story, single-family residence and detached two-car garage. At the last meeting, the Planning Commission directed the applicant to meet with neighbors to explain the project, consider redesigning the project to eliminate the removal for a 15, or for a 10-foot setback and actually comply with a 15-foot front setback, and consider redesigning the project to reduce the height of the garage and provide a scale model of the development showing neighboring structures and the ridgeline. So the applicant has revised his project. There is a revised set of drawings. I'll have the, I have the old drawing up on top, so you can see what the previous building was. May I approach?
Yes.
So before, sorry, I have trouble seeing. We have a garage in this area that had a 23-foot high, it was a 23-foot high garage. Basically, you had the floor of the garage and then you had a wall coming down because this part of the, this part of the site slopes downward. Now, the applicant has modified his proposal. He's now showing a 15-foot high garage from the bottom, although the applicant can modify that to be a 12-foot. 15 feet is what's allowed in a secondary ridgeline, however, because this is a flat roof, there's now a zoning code issue that requires this to be 12 feet tall, a maximum with a flat roof. So that was, that's one change that occurred. The other change is in the front setback, so...
So, hold on. I'm sure we're gonna have a lot of issues, so...
Yes.
If it's 12 feet, it can be flat. If it's 15 feet, it needs to be sloped, I'm assuming?
Well, kind of, if it's, any garage can be 12 feet tall. But to have a 15-foot high garage, you need to have a pitched roof under the zoning code Title 30. In this case, we were looking at it in terms of the ridgeline ordinance. The ridgeline ordinance only allows 15-foot high structures maximum in a ridgeline, in a property that has a secondary ridgeline.
Okay.
So when I looked at this, I thought, oh, 15 foot's fine. I forgot it was a flat roof, so it should be 12. So this would need to be modified. He's not asking, at this point, for a modification on the height of the garage. He was originally, now he took away that retained, the retaining, well, it wasn't even a retaining wall, it was a wall to the rear that was supporting the structure. Now he's proposing a cantilever. He would just need to lower the height of the garage itself, perhaps remove the parapet to make it match the 12-foot or lower height. And he can do that. Garages can go down, they only need seven feet of clearance. With a flat roof, without the parapet, he would be able to design a garage that can meet that requirement.
So the 15-foot garage is off the table?
At this point, yeah. He would, he's still asking for a flat roof, so he still wants to have a flat roof garage.
But that's good.
He's good with a ridgeline finding.
All right.
So that's, if you give him a ridgeline finding, then he's good with both the zoning code and Title 16, so Title 30 and Title 16. With a, with a flat roof and 12-foot tall, maximum 12 feet tall. And 12-foot is from where the building comes out of the ground to the top.
What's in front of us, Ms. Toddler, is a 15-foot tall garage.
That's right. That's why I'm pointing that out to you, because this would be something that he is not requi, at this point, he's modified his request, he's not requesting a variance for the height of the garage. So he would need to keep it at 12 feet, at this point. And that would be consistent with your direction from the previous meeting to lower the height of the garage. So that would be, that would be consistent with what you directed him to do. The other change he's made is before, he had, he was looking at, I believe, a nine-foot setback. He's modified that, and on the current plan, it's now shown 15 feet, right here to the structure. And this would be the edge of the right-of-way, so there's your 15 feet as measured from the edge of the right-of-way.
I didn't notice that there's a 12-foot setback there, so...
Yeah, that might be from what it was before, but he's, right now, he's showing a 15. So when the applicant can address that...
But I think, still here, you look at it, this is a 12 feet, right here.
Well, he would need, he would need to modify it to be 15.
So that has to be modified to 15?
Yeah, and it looks like he's moved it back.
Right.
The number may not, he might not change the number. But he needs to move back the corner of his building, cannot be closer than 15 feet from the front.
So maybe he should explain whether that is 15-foot or 12-foot?
Yeah, he can modify, he can explain the modifications he would need, but that would not be in your approval, so that would be something he would have to comply with.
Right.
And modify, should he go to DRB. The other issue we have going on also is that he did provide a model, and the model is in front of you. When we looked at the model, it was originally showing that there was a retaining wall here, and then the garage, what he's proposing is to have, the retaining wall was actually part of his garage. He's building into the hill. We have buildings all over the city that have this, so that's what he's doing. He's minimizing it by building into the hill. We did notice, though, that there is a portion of the retaining wall, there's a planter and a portion of a retaining wall that he's showing in here. What he'll need to do is make the garage a little bigger, make this part of his building, we can always have a longer garage, it's nothing that's prohibited under the code. So he won't have any portion of this wall showing that's greater than three feet. He also has a, he can also burn his landscaping. This is a typical solution. We've seen this again in numerous areas, but I want to point that out to you because it is something that, as it's shown right here, doesn't exactly meet the code. He's not asking for a variance or anything for it. This is something he would need to modify to meet the code.
Is that the portion, Ms. Toddler, on the, on the model between the structure, the main, the main house and the garage?
Yeah, ma'am, I'll show you.
Please.
Can you see this?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't I move over here?
Right.
The area that he's modifying would be right in here. Right now, you have, this is, oh, this would be over three feet tall. But what he would be doing is pushing out his garage, the top, at least the top of the garage, maybe storage or something else, he can make it usable.
So...
And he would still have driveway, and then whatever's in here, you just burn the landscaping. Burn the landscaping.
So then the visual side that it's gonna yield would be about three feet tall, is what you're telling me, right?
Yeah.
What is visually...
He can't have more than three feet exposed. And that would be a code requirement, he would be required to do that. He's not asking for a variance to do that, that is...
So he has to comply?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because he's not asking for a variance.
Correct, yes.
And then again, let me show you where he's showing the cantilever. Or, he was showing a wall all the way down here. And so this would be cantilevered out, and he would just need to make sure that this from the bottom to the top, no more than 12 feet. The other issue is that, that you can see that right here, there's a valley that's coming down. What he's now showing on this model is that he is proposing a wall, it would be vacant behind the wall, we just, you'd have a slope behind the wall, but he would have a wall guard, it's not retaining, so there's no height limit on it. But then he would have a wall up here, so people wouldn't, their yard not fall over, but this is something that he would put in there, so he could walk from the garage over to his, his building, and if this is something he didn't want to see the wall, this is something that could be adjusted. Put a walkway, he could put something else in there. This is just a clear space. This is just, I guess, so you don't have an open space underneath the walkway. That's what he's proposing.
And I assume that band is an indication of the secondary ridgeline? Is that what it is, or no?
This is a secondary ridgeline, right here. That was one of the things that you asked him to show. So, and then also, he's showing in black, he's showing the property lines. And this is what you've asked the applicant to do. He's also showing the neighboring properties. So he has, like, the development over here, there is a, a structure that the neighbor has on the corner of the property, but that, we're not, we didn't show that. There's also some encroachments over here that he's not showing that. We're just concentrating where he's actually proposing it.
Encro, encroachments. By?
Neighboring property owners. This was open space.
So, so, so hang on a second. Let me, so, so there is an encroachment by the neighboring property into this property?
Property's over here, yeah. There's some encroachment. And this property here.
So it's a subtle encroachment?
It's one the neighbors need to work out.
Okay.
Good question. Where you're standing, are there any properties overlooking the...
No, this is open space here. This is an open space lot. All this is open space.
How about, how about from now below? Is that wall visible, that protective wall?
This wall here, it may be visible, it may be visible from streets below.
Streets below?
But not adjacent, because there's a vacant land, there's public open space. And then on the other side of that, there is a roadway, so they might be able to see it.
Has there been any chagrin over that wall, from the community or from the neighbors?
Oh, yeah, we've heard a lot of, well, we've heard concern...
From that wall? Or that wall in the back, the one that was put in there...
The non-retaining wall?
Non-retaining wall.
The non-retaining wall. Yeah, there's been concern throughout this project for a variety of issues, but yeah, that was raised as an issue. In fact, any development on this was raised as an issue. They were concerned about the height of the garage, or, we've heard concerns in there in the letters, that this garage here, because it's cantilevering, before it was straight down into the hill, now they're cantilevering, and now there's concerns that it's not consistent with the hillside ordinance. We have heard that on the hillside ordinance does direct that buildings be designed into the, into the topography. However, because this is a secondary ridgeline, the way our ridgeline ordinance is written, that we have development standards in a secondary ridgeline to preserve the ridgeline. So this is a balance, preserving the ridgeline, he's, around again, he's preserving the ridgeline in terms of, there's no development proposed up here at all, he's staying out of it. But conversely, it puts him into a smaller portion of the site. I forgot how, overall, how the, the site's quite large, it's well over an acre, but he's developing on a small portion of it because of that type of ridgeline. He's not behind a lot of the homes, because his property goes quite far in this direction. He's not developing over there, he's, he's confining it kind of into this area. It minimizes the grading, but yeah, it does have some issues. It's definitely has a flat roof in order to make the height limit. It's a trade-off. The applicant made a trade-off, and I'm sure he can explain to you what his choices were, but if he does a pitched roof, then he goes over the height limit. And if he does more grading and builds up higher on the hillside, then he impacts the secondary ridgeline. So in this case, he nestled development into the hill, which he's doing. In fact, there's a retaining wall that is being used as part of the house that gives it a lot, that's why it makes it look massive and has got extra height. But on the other hand, you're looking at a one-story building, the deflection wall behind the house, will it be visible? Yeah, it'll be visible. But is it inconsistent with the ridgeline ordinance? We don't think it is. We think he's doing the best he can to fit a development into the property, use his property, and enjoy his property to the same extent as the neighbors. And that is what the purpose of a variance is for. That's why we have exceptions in the code. So that's, we feel he's trying to keep with the intent of the ridgeline ordinance, but he's staying away from the ridgeline. But we feel that what he's asking for is reasonable to give him use of the property. So it's, it's a trade-off. It's not perfect, but we think there's adjustments that can be made. And right now, what he's asking for, this is asking for permission to have a flat roof on a property with a secondary ridgeline. And he's asking to have, at this point, in the rear, next to the open space, he's retaining his, he has a five-foot setback, he's proposing where 10 feet is required. But again, this lot behind it is permanent open space. There will be no development back here. And that's kind of why people tend to encroach into open space areas. This lot's no different than some of the neighbors also. So I'm just saying that, in this case, you don't have anybody back here, so he's not having a reduced front setback, is it encroaching on another, another residence?
So pre-cantilever, that, the wall that is in the back?
Yes.
That wall was going straight down into the, to the border of the open space, basically the border of the property line, right?
Yeah.
And what was, what was the reason?
Exactly like this is?
And the reason that...
With the support.
Was, the, the reason that was changed was so it will reduce the visual effects? Because if it's not affecting any neighbors at that, at that, at that location, then it will be the visual effects, right? Is, is that what we're talking about?
Well, you, at the last meeting, he was following your direction, the direction of the, of the commission?
We said that's too massive.
And you asked him, can you reduce it, can you reduce the height? Because it was going to be 23 feet, and again, it's not 23 feet that you're gonna see from the street level, or 23 feet that you're gonna see from adjacent homes. It's 23 feet from the open space. So that, you asked him to do it, and so he, he said, I think I can do it, and that's what he came up with.
And how much is that height, huh?
Well, now he's proposing, as it's shown right now on the plans, it's 15 feet.
It should be 12.
It should be 12. And he has the ability to make it 12. He can, he can make this smaller. He can remove the parapet, he can get rid of some of the supporting that he has in here and just use a different system for supporting the garage. We did speak with the applicant, I know he's here, I'm sure he can explain it. So that's, that basically concludes my presentation, and that kind of outlines what the changes were. The rest of the staff report hasn't changed at all. I've included the full cross-sections, because essentially, the cross-sections for the house have not changed. And so those are the old, on that side, are the old cross-sections and also the elevation.
So at the end of the day, how many variances are we asked to sign off on? One?
One variance, and the variance, although there's an exception?
Not really.
And a variance. So variance, there's one variance, and the variance is a setback variance. Asking for five feet.
Of 10, okay.
As opposed to...
As opposed to five. Or a 10.
No, 10, instead, five instead of five?
Five difference.
Yeah. And then, he's asking for an exception to have a flat roof and to have a height over 15 feet, because he's got retaining, he's got a wall, the retaining wall of the house needs a, a deflection wall, impact wall about it. So when you go from the bottom to the top of the structure, yeah, now you're over 15 feet, although the house itself maintains the 15 foot. So it's, this is a low scale. It's just what brings it up is this. And you can see it, I can show you on the elevation.
So now we are at two variances and an exception. We're not really at one variance.
You're at one variance and an exception.
Two exceptions, yeah.
Yeah, the other...
Two exceptions.
So where do you get the second exception?
Well, truly, the exception is to have a flat roof.
But didn't you say that it's okay to have a flat roof if you have...
To have a height over 15 feet.
But you said it's okay to have a flat roof if you have a 12-foot?
The, the, the wall behind the house.
Ah, okay.
Our code's quite complicated. So, yeah, what, the issue is that this, there's a wall, let me see if I can find. We have, here's your house, there's a wall to the house, and the wall of the house is a retaining wall. On top of the retaining wall, you have, you have an impact wall on top of this. So when you take, so in terms of a structure, he said, all right, you have, your height is gonna be from, be conservative, yeah, it's from the top of this retain, this retaining wall and the impact wall, and top of the impact wall down, that's your height. So here you have your impact wall goes down, there's a retaining wall behind the house, the house is in front of it. Like, on there, you'll see the house is in front, and then the back, from here to here, that's over, it's over 15 feet high. The house itself is 15, but he's over, he would be over. And he's asking for an exception because, although it's not for the structure, it's not for, like, a living area of the house, but he definitely needs it in order to support the development, for the design. So the way our code is written, if you're in a secondary ridgeline, it's not, it's not zoning, this is not a variance in terms of zoning. Because in zoning, I believe you can have a 30-foot, 35-foot height, I believe, is what's allowable in the R1R zone. But because he has a ridgeline, now you look at Title 16, not zoning, you look at subdivisions, and look at the ridgeline ordinance, and the ridgeline ordinance is the one that says 15 feet. So his house complies, not necessarily the height. And then also the flat roof. Because if you put a pitched roof on, then he would be over the 15 feet for the stretch of the house.
That's an exception.
So, and those two are exceptions.
Those are exceptions.
Yeah. So, flat roof and the height and the secondary ridgeline, which he's... And then the setback on the side, which is a variance. Yeah, does that...
So the exceptions are really the flat roof on the structure and the garage?
Yeah, flat roof on the site. For all the development.
So they need to be, because they're flattened, because they are under the ridgeline, they should be no more than 12 feet.
Yeah, he can't exceed 15. You have a detached garage, garage requirement is the maximum of 12 feet because it's a flat roof.
And what is the house's...
And then the house needs to have a, but because both of them are on a ridgeline property, they both would otherwise need to have a pitched roof, because the...
If it exceeds 12 feet?
Pitched roof, if you're developed, because the property itself has a ridgeline, you have to have a pitched roof.
If it exceeds 12 feet height?
No. Any, any, any structure...
If you're on a ridgeline, you need a...
Any house or accessory building on a ridgeline, on a property with a ridgeline, even though he's not touching the ridgeline, needs to have a pitched roof. And that's not, it's not a zoning requirement.
And that's the subdivision, the ridgeline guideline?
Yes, it's, uh, ridgeline code. No, that's a code.
It's a code.
That is a code requirement. It's in Title 1608. That happens to be a secondary ridgeline requirement. The goal, let me give you a little history. The goal of a ridgeline, the ridgeline ordinance is to keep people off the ridgeline. And they don't, I mean, it sounds obvious, but if there's development, and so they're directing people, not only do you stay off the ridgeline in development, but then you also don't impede the view of it. So that's why they want development to be below, and they want a low-scale development in front of it, so that nobody is blocking a view. So if you're a neighboring property, you can still look over whatever house or structure might be on this lot, but you'll be able to see the ridgeline. So that's, that was the theory behind the secondary ridgeline requirements. In this case, your ridgeline's up here, so he's meeting the intent, he's staying below the ridgeline, he's not developing it. But because of the topography on this site, the only way for him to have, I mean, it's one of those, what's, kind of pick your poison, do you have a pitched roof, in which case your building goes over 15 feet? Or do you have a flat roof and stay below the 15-foot level? So in this case, the applicant came in with the, following basically the intent of the ridgeline ordinance, to keep a lower-level building, but he has a flat roof to do that. He needs a flat roof. So in this case, he chose a flat roof, but because the exception, because the code requires under Title 16 to have a pitched roof, it's an exception. It's not a variance, because it's not a Title 30. It's an exception because it's in Title 16.
Ms. Toddler, I think the confusion comes about, because you have a 15-foot guideline for the main house, main structure, and yet you are applying 12-foot guideline for the garage.
To the garage, exactly.
So I think, I think that is where the confusion is.
Yeah, that, our code confuses many people, but that's exactly, and I was one of them. That's why I'm pointing it out to you, that we took a look at what the ultimate height is that's proposed. Because it's a flat roof, now it's not, now you look at, now we need to look at Title 30. Title 30 limits it to 12. So this is consistent, this would be otherwise consistent with the ridgeline ordinance, it's less than 50, it's 15 feet or less, but now it's Title 30 because the roof is flat, needs to be 12 feet. I don't know if that, is that, I hope that's clear.
So why, why does that...
I think I confuse people, I see people not...
So why does that 12-foot does not apply to the main house?
Because they're detached, and it detached structures are the ones under Title 30. If they have a flat roof, they have to have a lower, a 12-foot height.
Got it.
When you say pitch, does, do we know what the pitch needs to be for, you said it need, on the ridgeline, it has to be a pitched roof. What is the angle?
Oh, I believe it's 3 and 12, but I'd have to go look it up. I can look that up.
And when you say that it has to be no more than 15-foot, feet high, we're talking about the average, or the highest point cannot be more than 15 feet?
Highest point of the house. But here, they're over, because this is, because the retaining wall, and when you add the, the training wall, which is actually part of the house, and then you add the deflection wall above it, your height's above. And I know that, I mean, the architect and engineer, they're both here, so I'm sure, if you have questions, I'm like, why do they need the additional height in here? I, I know they can explain that to you.
Okay.
And then the other thing, I, I think I did point it out, that when the model first came in, it showed a straight wall across here is quite high, so that can be modified, and that has been modified on the model. So with the way, I know some of the residents were here earlier, looking at it, saying that was quite large, these walls that were shown in here, but they don't have to be that way, that was a model builder, and so now it's been modified, so the walls, and that's, that is what Stephanie asked for in the last meeting. She said, well, can't you make it match the topo? And that's sort of what he's done.
Right.
You can see it slopes down. So...
Okay, thank you, Ms. Toddler. Any more questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay, on.
But I'll let you go sit down. So in your findings, your finding B, there are exceptional circumstances or conditions applicable to the property. That's the particular finding that is of interest to me. If this property, if the structure, the main house was smaller, would it have needed the exception for the height?
Yes, because of where, the site's extremely constrained, and he needs to build into the hill. That's the only way he's gonna have an area that's large enough for him to be able to that's large enough for him to be able to develop. And we'll let the applicant describe that later. But it would have been very tough. I don't know how he would have been able to develop a house that would have enough depth to make it usable to develop unless he built into the hill. Once you build in the hill, you're putting in a deflection wall. So he has minimized the amount by using the retaining wall as part of his house. But he does need the deflection wall above it. He does need it. And the way the house is designed, and you can see it on the site plan, is it steps a little bit. But when you take our ultimate height, you look from the low to the high. That's why you have the 15 feet. At any given point in it, it actually is a bit lower than that and the applicant can explain it. But the retaining wall in the back and the deflection wall, that would probably remain the same, no matter what it designed in the house.
With smaller or issue.
In order to meet the setbacks, exactly. So that's why his house shrunk when you asked him to, to increase the front setback. That's why the house got smaller.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Any more questions from the commissioners? Then we'll go to the applicant. Can we have Mr. Edward Hagobian come up and present the project? You have 15 minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board members. My name is Edward Hagobian. I am the architect and designer of this project. Since last time, I tried to follow the guidelines that you gave us. I'm a little bit embarrassed that I missed that height of the garage with all this experiences that I have designing hillside houses. However, if you look carefully to the bottom of the garage, we have braces that come up. And the height of those braces are two feet. The structural engineer, he didn't recommend to have these braces. But I thought if the height of the garage can be 15 feet, we can have braces to hold that can deliver portion of the garage. Now that we can eliminate that two feet of the brace and lower six inch from the parapet and six inch from the garage, will meet that 12-foot height of the garage code. May I approach and show you that difference in the garage?
Yes, yes. The old one, new joint stand there. Cross-section, yes.
You see how this, this point is? If we don't use this brace, the height of the garage will come about two feet higher. And then we can lower six inch in the parapet and six inch from the garage. And it will be the 12-foot height of the garage.
So that brace doesn't have to be an angle, is that what you're saying?
See this height here? That will be the one. Height of the garage. The height of the garage will be according to the code. And anything that is not according to the code and it needs final, final tune-up, we'll do it to meet all zoning codes. I have a photo here from the site that shows what we have behind that garage. This is the location of that garage here. And as far as you can see, you don't see any street. I'm very bit surprised when Laura said from the street bottom, you can see that. There is no street there. As a matter of fact, when you look, you don't see anything from there. All you see is that natural hills and the bushes that are there. Also Laura talked about the encroachment of the neighbors. And I would like to, one is the photo from the Google that our neighbor is encroaching into our space. They have built two decks outside their property, inside our property and inside government property. The other one that they have encroached, they have encroached with fence into our property.
Mr. Hagobian, we're not litigating encroachment, right? We're talking about, so what's the purpose of showing this to me?
Well, since Laura mentioned about this, I want to show you where those things are. The neighbor has encroached this our property and the fence there. Besides the recommendation of the board, also I was curious to find out about the complaint of these 39 people that they have signed this petition, trying to see what will satisfy them. I called several of them, which two of them are kind of family friend with me. The first person that I called was Mrs. Hira Petian. And I asked him, when you sign this, did you know that what you are signing? He said, we were, I asked him, did you see the plans? Did you see what are we talking about? And she says, no, we were told that the garage is 23-foot high. Why you need the 23-foot high garage? Are you parking a truck inside? Said, no. I explained to her that what is the case? And he was surprised that the person who campaigned these signatures and went door to door did not explain to anybody that what is that 23-foot height? Same was with Mr. Sarkisian. I called Mr. Sarkisian and I said, when you sign this, did you know what you are signing? Same thing. I called two more people. They were totally unaware of that, what they are signing. based on your recommendation, we have reduced the size of the house and push back the house to have that 15-foot front setback, meeting the zoning code. The only thing that we are asking is that five-foot setback on the one side of the house towards the government property. And answering the question that was brought out, that size of the house is, is a matter. If we make it smaller, can we reduce the height? No, it's the same thing. Because we have a very limited depth to build the house. And once we cut the hill and put the house in, it is small or 200, 200, 300 square foot, bigger, smaller, 1,000 square foot smaller, is the same thing. It's not going to make any difference. We made a model and I found out about this code issue today. I didn't want to come to this hearing having some problems or missing something. We just found it today. If I knew this a week ago, I would have changed the plans and, and solved all the issues so that we could present you the final plans that meets all the codes. Unfortunately, it was too late. We didn't have time.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. And you're referring to the 12 feet versus the 15 feet garage height?
Yes, yes, yes.
That's what you mean by the code?
Commissioner Strain, can we hold our questions till he's done?
Sure.
Okay. Another issue here that is a zoning code issue, the height of this wall. However, this, this wall cannot be seen by all the neighbors here. They cannot see that. The thing is that in zoning code, we can have wall. We have two walls. One is the retaining wall, one is wall. A retaining wall has codes, all kinds of it. Retaining wall cannot be higher than five feet. A number of the retaining walls can be like two in the front setback plus three on the, beyond the front setback. And, but walls have no limit. When they are not retaining anything, there is no limit for them. Now, this situation, this patient here, this slope goes like this. The wall goes vertical. So if the wall is vertical and slope is going like that, the inside is empty. They have a structural deck here. But that triangle is empty. And because it's empty, we don't feel it. It can be more than five feet, which is, I believe is about seven to eight feet. Even we can feel five feet of it and keep two or three feet of it, not filled. But it doesn't make sense. Once the, the deck is structural, why to fill it up to a point and leave the rest open? Now, I have been reading some of the letters that today I was given by city about complaint of the neighbors. They are complaining about the size of the house. There are houses that are larger than this house, not far from this property. 19, oh, no, sorry. The address is 1411 Turn Lane Road. It's 2875, 2,875 square foot. Now, they are complaining that we are blocking the view. I don't, cannot think of how we can block view of all these people here or here looking in this direction. While the only property that is looking to our privacy, because they are higher and they look to our privacy. But they don't complain about that, that's why. And the neighbors in this direction, you know, this lot is very big. It goes something like up to here, more than an acre lot. And these neighbors now, they are enjoying the view and the hill. And they will enjoy forever because we are not going to build anything here. However, the owner of this property has the right to build a house, a small house, relatively small also to the lot that is three to four times bigger than the neighboring lots. However, that's a kind of contribution to the city, to neighbors that they will have this open space behind their houses. This time, I hope that people who are complaining, they can understand better what are we trying to do? What is the thing that we are asking? For the height of the, for this, the only thing that we are asking now is a setback. That's it. But even the garage, even if we had that column on the back, that column was not visible from anywhere. Of course, technically, this call 23-foot high. But the garage is not 23-foot high inside. It's nine-foot high. The sign was installed in this property and it was removed, destroyed. And we didn't know who did that. All I can think of, the person who did that cannot be from other neighborhood or other city or other state or downtown Glendale or... So we have been kind of facing a little bit of animation from the neighbors. No cooperation. They asked to see the model and the owner refused because of that. Because they were adamantly objecting when saying things that was not logic. The only person that I talk, neighbors, was a lady. She was knowledgeable. Apparently, she was kind of involved in some kind of, to be commissioner somewhere, I don't know where. Maybe City of Los Angeles. She adamantly said, I don't want any variance. Or what? Well, this lot is exceptional. You cannot find more than maybe two, three, four, five lots in Glendale that they have this condition. Maybe nothing, maybe no other lot is like this. So it's variance is for some, a lot that is exceptionally different and restrained from being able to use the entire lot somehow. We cannot do that because of that ridgeline, because of the hill, because of the shape of the lot. The owner had this lot for, I believe, more than 17 years. He kept it, he cleaned it, he cut the brushes and he paid the tax. And he has the, we all know that he has the right to build something there, to live there. I don't know if it's necessary to say that there was a paper street passing through this lot that the city find out that that street will never be built again. It will never be built. So they vacated this lot to the owner so he can build a house there. So when this house is built, I think it will be safer for the neighbors because neighbor, the owner was telling me that cleaning last year, he found some bottles there, some cigarette boxes, some other boxes. And people come there, maybe enjoying sitting there or smoking or even that smoking is dangerous for the fire to happen there. So once this is built, there will be somebody living there. It will be controlled, sprinkled, landscaped, paved according to present codes of the building code, fire code and all other codes. As you can see, between the closest house to this is this one. I'm not talking about this one because this is, this is so high. They will be looking to our bedrooms, to our privacy of our house here. Between us and them, which they are a little bit higher as you can see. There is a wall and there are trees. I don't know how a one-story, low-profile house can be detrimental to other neighbors. I have done my best. Sorry that I missed that one item of the zoning code. But we'll keep working on it. If you approve it with that condition that we have to meet all the codes. No exception except that five-foot side setback there. So I am asking to you to approve this project because we spend a lot of time thinking and finding solutions. And that wall on the back is a requirement of the building code to have an impact wall from the debris coming down. And by the way, I have to mention this again because I see this often even in designing work. People come and complain about mudslide, landslide or, or things like dust or portable toilets or things like that. Those are requirements by the code. We have to have those things. And during the construction, any house you build in hillside, there are some grading, there are some work to be done. Of course, that will be done mitigated, controlled by the current code. So if Sundays shouldn't work or Saturdays, there's time limit to work there. They will obey all these rules.
Ms. Hagobian, you need to wrap up your presentation.
Did I talk about 15 minutes?
Yes, you got yellow light.
Oh, sorry, okay. The grading on this is half of the allowed 1,500 cubic, less than half of it. So we are not doing anything extraordinary or detrimental to public, cutting somebody's view.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hagobian. We're open for questions from the commissioners? Any questions?
I have a, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a, the property right behind the garage area. I understand that, if anything, right. And that, okay, we'll, we'll discuss this later. But of all the complaints that we have received, so you understand, many of them have to do with their view being disrupted and whatnot. Some are talking about the size of the house. But that is the only property that owner wrote, asking and being very concerned regarding the effect that the construction of the garage would have on the stability of their soil. And basically, as I understand, yeah. They're talking about the land shifting due to the rain and so on and so forth. And now the construction that you're proposing would detriment, would act to their detriment. Can you comment on that, please?
Can you speak into the mic, please?
The first question was the view. I would like to, any neighbor that is complaining about it, to come and show us how do we block the view? What kind of view we block?
Sir, I understand that. I'm not addressing the view. Right now, I'm just interested in, can you comment on the effect that your construction of the detached garage would have on the property 1461 Third Lane?
Yes, we will have soil, soil report. And we'll have those walls and structures engineered. And we have to go to the process of the building plan check and engineering department's plan check. Not only the, the, the structure... plan check, not only the structure of the walls, but also the drainage, which we have a little bit of setback to have a V-shaped channel. And we will install a new system of drainage that now is not sufficient here from the street. So any kind of condition that exists here now, it will be stabilized by this strong concrete wall. It will not be worse, it will be better. So that's all I can say because all projects that I do or others do, we go through a process in engineering department, they check all these things. It's not that we take chances and build something that is not sound structurally and drainage-wise and other issues.
Commissioner Stewart, you have any questions?
Not at this moment. As you were, as you were making your presentation, I asked a couple of questions that were important.
So we have a few speakers on this case. Can I ask Lena Corset to come up?
Corbett.
Oh, Corbett, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, how many minutes did you want to give the speakers?
Three minutes each.
Okay.
Dear members of the Planning Commission, there continue to be fundamental concerns over this lot and development, and I'd like to summarize some of these concerns today. With all due respect, the applicant polled four people out of all those signatures that were received, and I don't think that means that the neighbors don't really understand the project. I think they do and they have concerns. This is Lot 27 of Track 25862. I surveyed all the archives at the Planning Commission's office and all city communication leading up to the city council approval referenced a maximum of 25 lots. Attachment A contains all the correspondence related to the approval of this tract in late 1960 to early 61. You'll note that there was a letter dated January 31, 1961, written by Joseph Mellon, who was our longtime planning director, and he deems the additional lots unacceptable and asks them to be removed. Between this letter and the date of recording of the tract on May 16, 1961, the Planning Commission archives showed no other correspondence on this matter. Somehow, this Lot 27 was recorded nevertheless. We believe this matter deserves further investigation. The highlighted portions of Attachment A show that the Planning Commission imposed and the city council consequently approved 43 conditions on the subdivision. Condition number 37 reads that all lots be provided with buildable areas having a minimum of 5,000 square feet, not counting front and side areas. This lot doesn't meet the very condition imposed on it when approved by the city council in 1961. Again, we feel this matter deserves further investigation. On March 10, 2015, not coincidentally around the same time that the applicant submitted the plan for development, the city council relinquished an offer of dedication of a public street located over this lot. It's troublesome that the city council, without any discussion or thoughtful analysis, would be so quick to relinquish this easement. If anyone took the time to view the lot, they would see it's a gateway to the open natural space behind it, and developing this lot would be cutting off this access forever. Additionally, the city council's approval has two fundamental flaws. I have the city council's approval in my, in my documents I gave you. The premise for the relinquishment was the city never accepted the dedication. That's simply not true. The final subdivision public report, that's in Attachment B, clearly states that all street dedications had been accepted by the city. Interestingly enough, it also says on the top to read this report before buying. Also, faulty legal analysis was used. The city council's analysis relied on the California Code of Civil Procedure, Section Basically, that code provision says that to dedicate property for public use, it is presumed the dedication was not accepted if all the following conditions are satisfied. Disregarding the fact that the dedication was accepted, the summary of the law provided to the city council failed to mention the last portion of the last condition, that the land be used as if free of the dedication. This lot has not been used for any purpose, public or private, since the 1961 offer to dedicate was made. Thus, the fourth criteria essential for the statutory application was not met.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett. You have a question?
Mr. Chair, I would ask that Ms. Corbett be given extra time.
Okay.
Thank you.
One more minute.
The minutes of the last meeting reflect that the applicant was asked to meet with neighbors and show the model to them. That never happened. The neighbors are still concerned about several aspects of this project. The size of the proposed home is larger than many homes in the area. While it's true, as the applicant suggests, some houses are larger that are nearby, but they also have larger buildable area. The size of this home is incongruous to the size of the buildable area on the lot. And the design of the home does not meet the character of the neighborhood. Also, the Planning Commission staff report shows no analysis of the municipal code, which states that site plans for development of property on steep slopes shall take into account visual impact on surrounding properties. I want to show you, one of the pictures I gave you, last time, there was a discussion about how you can't really see the massive concrete because it will be facing the open area space behind it. Is this the precedent we want to set? If you look at, what are the features, this one? This is the mountain ridge line at the end of Dublin Drive in the Emerald Isle area. This beautiful mountain ridge line has been destroyed by a vast blue infinity pool overhanging the ridge line. There are no houses behind it, so who can see it, right? Well, anyone looking up from the Chevy Chase area can see it. Anyone taking in the view from Shoal Canyon can see it. I implore you not to allow the destruction of this ridge line. It would have a negative visual impact on the surrounding properties, Camino Rafael Street and the hiking trail above Camino San Rafael. And this picture, this picture shows you Camino San Rafael Street and the new hiking trail that many people use now above Camino San Rafael Street. So I, again, I implore you not to allow the destruction of this ridge line. It's not only wrong, it's not compliant with the law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you for that.
Speaker.
Yes.
Not from the speaker, from the city attorney's representative.
Well, I do have a question.
Ms. Corbett, those you gave it to us, so I'd like to keep it in the record.
Give a gift, we're going to keep it.
You can have them.
Ms. Corbett, you made a reference to this, you know, few of the neighbors that applicant reached out to.
Sure.
Last time that we had this hearing, we did ask applicant to stake out meeting to include all neighbors. So was there such attempt, that did you receive any type of notification from the applicant?
No, actually, what happened is we organized ourselves and we reached out, we had an intermediary, Mr. Bill Nickel, who's part of the Chevy Chase Estate Association Board, I believe. And we said we had organized ourselves, let's meet Saturday, let's meet at the site so we can, with the model, so we can ask questions, and they refused to do so.
Oh, so that was never taken place?
Never took place.
Thank you.
Sure.
Excuse me.
City Attorney?
Quick question. I was wondering, have you reviewed this legal analysis? Or independent of any such review, do you have any sort of conclusion as to whether this particular lot can be built, legally speaking? That's all I care about.
My understanding at this point is the number of lots that were recorded, there were a number of lots that were associated with the tentative tract map, but those weren't the same number of lots that were ultimately recorded on the final map. And I know that Laura has taken a closer look at the facts around the recordation of the map, and she handed me a copy of the tract map, but perhaps she can fill in some of the factual details related to the recordation of the final map and the number of lots. Laura?
At this point, the only document that we have that lists the tentative map, and I'm talking about tentative, not the final, is that, is on an aperture card. And unfortunately, the original file, we don't have it in planning anymore. And we were looking through to see what we could see, when did, when did the number of lots change? Because as you're familiar with, when there's numerous, when people come in and they design a tract and then they redesign it, sometimes lots change. In this case, there was a, there was one map that came through, there was a change in where stepouts were being put for future roads. And we could read that part, but we couldn't read documents that said whether there was a change or not. However, and it's just, I'm not saying there wasn't one or there was one, but would we go by now, we go by a recorded map. A map can't be recorded with a county unless it meets all the requirements of the tentative map. It's ministerial, there's no option. The only time, sometimes things change, and it won't add a lot, but sometimes things change with grading. So all I can make an assumption is on this one is, since it was signed by the engineer and since it was recorded, it went to the city council, it has gone through the process in order to be recorded legally, we assume that that is a legal lot. At the time, it was residentially zoned, all lots created are residentially zoned and for residential purposes. There are no restrictions that I can see on that recorded map. And again, this is a recorded map with LA County, we took their records, the same one that the legal description is for this property. So we don't think there was another map, we think this was it. As far as we can tell, it looks like it was created legally and it was certainly recorded legally, and that becomes the document we go off of. Tendative maps upon recordation are no longer valid, the final map replaces them. So, I mean, I wasn't here back in 1961 and I can't see any evidence in our records that we have in planning that shows anything different than what was recorded. We have to go with that because I don't see anything that's, while there might have been earlier, tentative maps that might have had a different configuration at the time it ultimately recorded, that's what was created.
So Ms. Stoller... I'm sorry, go ahead.
So Ms. Stoller, you know, the speaker makes a specific reference to 5,000 square foot minus the setbacks. What is your take on that?
Well, my take is that you do have restrictions that go on a map for grading, there's oftentimes just direction that goes in as far as putting in public improvements. That's why you have things like private and future streets that are put on a map, as were put on this one. However, if it turns out after a while they're not used, I believe it's, I believe it's 25 years if you, if the street hasn't been put in, then the city can relinquish it if it is no longer needed. Since the area behind it was developed subsequently and it became open space, there is no place for that step out to go. You're not, you have a, basically a reservation for a street that's never going to go anywhere. And that is why the city engineer said, "We're not going to use it," hasn't been used after 25 years, we have no intention of using it, it doesn't have a public purpose anymore. That's why the remainder of it was vacated. And I believe that went to city council either, I think it went last year or could have been the year before. So, I mean, in terms of, was it proper to vacate the road? Yeah, that's up to the city engineer if he no longer has a need for it and it's been reserved for a long time, no one's ever used it, it doesn't, it's not going to another public property, it just goes to this one and that's it privately. It says it's only privately owned property, not a pub, not another, there's no room for it to go for further subdivision, I guess, is how I'd describe it. Then, no, it's proper for them to vacate it, it's a recorded map, has signatures, you can take a look at it, has signatures from the council, the city clerk, the city engineer. It's in proper form and it was recorded.
If I could add, because I know there was another issue relative to the relinquishment of the paper street, if for some reason that, that process was not properly adhered to from a procedural or legal standpoint, the remedy is simply to take the matter back to the city council after we have an opportunity to take a closer look at what has been alleged is improper relinquishment and properly relinquish the street. But I don't have an opinion for you at this time without taking a look at that particular transaction in front of the city council. But the remedy, as I said, would be simply to take it back and, and to follow whatever the appropriate procedure is for the relinquishment, which includes those findings that Laura just mentioned and there being no public need for, within the circulation element for that particular paper street.
Okay, thank you.
My concern...
Well, the only other thing I would just say is, you do have to, it's a two-map process. We do have a tentative map followed by a final map. A tentative map, when you see it, that's why you have discretion when you're approving a tentative map. But once that is approved, then it becomes ministerial. And as long as the conditions of approval are met, or there could be a subsequent public hearing, there could be modifications of conditions, whatever the conditions are in effect at the time that the map comes in for recordation, they're ministerial, there's not, there's not options to add lots, remove lots, whatever the conditions are, once it's recorded, then the tentative map goes away and what controls is the final map. So there's a lot of history perhaps on a tentative map, but once the final goes, then that's what we adhere to, and that is the legal map for the property.
So this interdepartment communication that we've been presented with, and no one has said it's not actually valid, dated January 31, 1961, where we have the following statement, "The final map shows 33 lots in this tract instead of the 25 approved by the commission. Lots 26 through 33 are not considered acceptable and should not be shown as, shown as individual lots. Lots 32 and 33 should be joined to either Lot 8 or Lot 9 or combined as one lot. Lots 26 through 31, both inclusive, should be combined as one lot." So this subject lot...
Staff has not received a copy of this communication.
Actually, we had this same communication during the last, our first meeting.
Previous meeting.
On this topic.
Did you say that you read that it's 8 and 9 should have been combined?
Correct.
Well, you know, on your tract map, it's not.
On your final map.
On your final map, it's not.
So is that a good thing or a bad thing?
Well, no.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
So did that take the recommendation of the...
The date on the map?
Yeah, I believe it was recorded in May and this is January.
1961, May 16, 1961 is the recordation.
Yeah, so this was done prior. These were, these were maps that were done prior to the recordation of the final map.
See, this is what the final is. Regardless of what that says, the final that has been recorded...
Where is that?
Well, here it is.
Well...
I mean, this, regardless of what, prior to it in, that's what Laura was trying to tell us, that your tentative is tentative, your final is final, and what you have in your hand is the final, Commissioner.
Gentlemen, you know, for the purpose of moving this case along, we will include maybe conditioning here for the staff to go back and, to see if it was properly vacated and, you know, and so on. But we will go on with the, the recordation, tentative tract map as our record for right now. So next speaker that we have is Wendy Holt. So when you come up here, please state your name, because I may butcher your name. I think I did it right this time.
Good, good. Hi, hi, Commissioners. My name is Wendy Holt. Just a few things. One of the things is, in the last meeting, you asked for the architect, the owner, whoever, to meet with the neighbors because there was not understanding and there was disharmony in the neighborhood over this, and that was not done. We did try and it was canceled. I, I get that they're upset, I get they want to build something, I get they own the property and they have the right to do what they need to. Also, we're asked very clearly by this commission to meet with us to just talk, and nobody has done that. And that is a problem because this neighborhood is tight-knit, we're, we're very clear with each other, we don't talk behind each other's backs, if we've got an issue, we talk to each other. And that's all we're asking here, is for the respect of somebody who wants to come and be part of that neighborhood to join in and not just take off on their own. It's been said that the sign was taken down. Well, we've had very strong winds in the last two, three weeks, and I am sure that the wind blew it down because the wind blew a lot of things around our neighborhood. And then the property cleaning, you know, I've been on Third Lane, on that side for 16 years, and I've seen that property cleared by this person twice, and not every year. So this last year, it was fully cleaned and beautifully cleaned, which led me to believe that something was going to happen. But prior to that, I had to call the city because the property behind my property is city property and say, "If it were my property, you'd have me clean." So by May 15 or whatever. So this is your property, I need you to reduce my fire hazard because there was a lot of dead brush. And three, four years ago, five years now, the city had LA County come and clean all of it from down at the bottom of Third Lane all the way to the top. So I'm sorry to contradict this gentleman, but that property has not been cleared by the owner if they've owned it for 17 years, because I've been there for 16 and haven't seen that happen. So I just want it to be cleared. And the last thing is, all of the properties that we are there, my understanding is we all have attached garages. So for this to be a detached garage seems inconsistent with the rest of the buildings in the neighborhood. So that's just it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Robert Hahn.
Good evening, my name is Robert Hahn. I really, want to say I really do wish the architect would have had the chance to meet with us because he did mention that there was a lot of confusion... with us because he did mention that there was a lot of confusion in the neighborhood and I think that a lot of that could be cleared if we did have a meeting. That being said, I do want to say, and I think I speak for a lot of people in the neighborhood, while we are opposed to the project, we're not necessarily, I mean, we're not at all opposed to the applicant. Matter of fact, more respect to him for having the ability to build his dream house, you know, I can appreciate that. But, you know, personally, I just, I don't feel it's right for the neighborhood, but I would love to have a chance to meet with the architect and have a chance to really see what it's about, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Adrina Asturian.
For the record, there is no connection.
My name is Adrina Asturian and we live on 1461 Thurlene Road in question. So dear members of the Planning Commission, I'm writing regarding the proposed construction of a house and garage on Bouquet Street in Glendale, California. We live on 1461 Thurlene Road, which is practically next to this proposal. We're absolutely flabbergasted and appalled at such a prospect. Allow me to explain why. The owner of the land next to us, the hill at the end of Bouquet Street, wants to build a 2,596 feet house on the hill. Due to the fact that there isn't enough space to build a garage there, he wants to build his garage below our house. He wants to build a 441 feet detached garage under our house going down 23 feet in concrete. As if all this isn't enough, the builder is seeking several building code variances. Now, to date, there has been a hearing in November where a petition was presented of all the neighborhood residents opposing to the project. Also, two weeks ago, the owner, together with his architect, were supposed to present the model of the house to our neighborhood, but he refused to do any such thing. So far, the owner of the land has his head buried in sand and is going ahead with his wishes irrespective of residents who have been living here some more than 40 years. The owner wants to build his garage below our house and has not approached us out of courtesy to see if that is okay with us. Now, if we have been living in this pleasant, now, we have been living in this pleasant neighborhood for 18 years. We enjoy our beautiful view more than anything else. It was one of the main reasons we fell in love with our house. We have thus far enjoyed the serenity and peacefulness of our surroundings. We are absolutely against this idea and will go all the way to fight it. Now, the Planning Commission hearing is this Wednesday, February 17th at 5:00 PM. If God forbid, this crazy plan goes ahead, this will be disastrous for us. Not only will this destroy our gorgeous view, the drilling of 23 feet concrete will surely shake our foundation and make it weak. We have already experienced our land shifting due to rain. A few years back, the city came and constructed a massive pipe through which the rainwater could go. This is how vulnerable our land is. Now, to have an extra unnecessary garage built down below us would be horrendous to our already shaky foundation. I don't see why he has to build his garage underneath our house. It will be an ugly and stupid thing to do. I'm literally begging of you, if there's anything you can do for us to put a stop to this construction, we would be eternally grateful.
Thank you.
So I do have a question for you. This is the house that you reside in.
I have no idea. I haven't seen it.
The garage. That's the, you see that garage?
This one?
Yes, that's your house.
Okay.
You are actually higher, and that's the garage. You see that small cube?
This one here.
That's right. So, and this is built to the scale. So you're higher than that garage.
But it's still destroying the view that we have enjoyed for so many years. And all the houses around us have attached garages. This is the only one with detached garage.
That's the letter that I was talking about when I said that-
Yes.
-it's the only one that actually brings out the possibility of the construction having a negative effect on her property.
Because drilling that much will surely affect the foundation. I'm not an engineer, but, you know.
So let me ask you this. Assuming if that was not an issue, you still would have had an objection to the garage being there?
If what wasn't an issue?
If the drilling, the foundation was not to the detriment of your property and your building, would you have still voiced an objection for this garage to be there?
Absolutely.
What would have been the grounds for that?
Well, first of all, privacy. We've enjoyed that privacy. Even though you say we're higher, it's still, you're looking down on concrete. It's still not the same as what we have enjoyed for so many years, for 18 years. And to not ask anything, to just come in, straight in, and, I mean, I'm appalled that it's come to this stage. We're discussing so much, basically.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Roland Fuer.
Good evening. I'm Roland Fuer. I live on 2965 Edgewood Road. First, I hike on the hillside around here all the time, so the view is very important to me. The view, you could see that side completely from the road, El Camino. I'm getting the road wrong now. But, one thing I wanted to point out is that these walls are quite large and they're right on the property line. I don't even know how you can build those 14-foot tall walls on a property line without the owner of this property actually agreeing to it because you have to build a few feet behind that wall in order to protect the wall. This wall is 14 feet above the finished floor of the garage. So that wall effectively becomes part of the structure, similar to what they're saying here. So I don't know how you can get that to be 12 feet when the wall is 14 feet above finished floor. Additional structure for the cantilever underneath is just going to add on top of that 14 feet. It's going to be higher than 14 feet. It doesn't meet the hillside ordinance. It's totally against hillside ordinance, cantilevering over hillside. Having a retaining wall, I know they may have a three-foot wall on top of it, but the retaining wall below it is at least seven feet. When I look at the contours there, it's 10 feet. I wish I would have seen those models earlier. All of these issues I brought up yesterday with planning, when I finally got to see the model. The front setbacks, there's a sidewalk here. This one is 12 foot six-
Do me a favor. Can you turn it around so when you point, we can see?
This one is 12 foot six to the front corner of the house. These are even closer. These two get closer to the property corner. You can look at it, it's not dimensioned on the plans, but it definitely is about half the distance, I would say, as the 15 foot. It may be nine or 10 feet. The height of the building, it wouldn't be so bad if that just was a retaining wall because you could plant in front of it. I don't know why it can't, maybe it can't be moved back further, but it is attached to the house. It becomes part of the structure. It's a big billboard on top of the house. It really, it'd almost be better to slope it and ask for a variance for 15-foot tall house and put a roof on it so that it matches all the other houses in the neighborhood. Right now, it's one big flat wall. It won't look like that rendering that has green coming over the top because it's five foot on the backside of it. There's nothing to hang over the top of it. The height of these walls here, if you look at section, basically, it's detail two on section BB on sheet A6 over there, you will see that wall. It basically, in that drawing, is about 16 feet. In actuality, from the bottom of that point of the house to the top of that wall is 20 feet. It basically, the overall height becomes 20 feet. So, I think a lot of these issues should be cleared up and not be part of, "We will fix this." I think it should be fixed before the planning actually rules on it. Thank you so much.
Okay, I do not see any more cards, so I'd like to have the applicant back up here for your rebuttal to address some of the questions that's been raised.
First of all, I don't know what that picture of the Emerald Isle, how we can relate that to this condition of this garage and the very distant hill that is behind that. I don't know how you compare these things.
Are you referring to this?
Talking about the infinity pool?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah. This garage that we have will not be visible to anybody because it's so far from the hills on the back. Is it possible to open the Google and show this area so we can see actually what is happening behind that garage? How distant are, is the first street or first building?
But this is what you gave me, right? It still shows on this. And we have seen this.
Of course, yeah.
So Laura, we're okay because-
Yeah, I don't think our equipment's working.
The gentleman who is walking, just now, he spoke about a lot of things here and none of those are technically true, that's what he said. Looks like he knows better than we know what we put in the dimension and sizes. We have to be a little bit accurate and know what are we talking about. Just simply saying that this is 16 feet, that's 18 feet, that's not true. Yes, the gentleman from Homes Association sent me an email asking for a meeting. I don't know if they made a mistake or what. With that email came all the correspondence, all the emails that people have been sending to each other, and there were nasty words on that. Even they accused Laura that, they said, "Why she is trying to push this to be approved." And that gave me a kind of feeling that these people, they, we will not be able to have a fair meeting in an environment that we can exchange opinions, ask questions, respond to them, and be fair. Looks like, without knowing the facts of construction, facts of the codes, facts of the process in the city, they want to have not, nothing to be built there. Now, this neighbor is saying, "I'm looking back to your privacy and your garage is blocking my view." Can you imagine that? I don't know how to talk to these people. And while they have encroached into our property and built a decked it, our survey and that Google map that I gave you clearly shows that. I have been having meetings with the Homes people several times for other projects in a very fair atmosphere and environment, exchange ideas, but this one, the way I saw this email that they had sent to each other, it made it impossible for me to agree to go to see these people. I wish I had a printout of it and gave it to you so you can see what they told to each I assure and guarantee that that garage, if it's built there, it will not shake anybody's foundation because there is a distance between here, here. There will be casings and shorings to support that construction. Or, in other words, we can push this garage like about a foot or so away from there, but even that, we don't need it. We know what we are doing. So if somebody comes here and says, "I'm not an engineer, but you cannot do that." Well, you have to be an engineer to say that we cannot do that. It's like, I say, "I'm not a doctor, but you should do that." That's not right. I have to be a doctor to recommend a medication to you. Otherwise, saying, "I'm not an engineer, but I know that that foundation will be shaken." That will never happen. Anyway, I, one more time, I am asking the commission to approve this project with the condition that we have to meet all the codes, zoning, fire, engineering, building, codes, and that, you know, that what kind of process we are going through in order to get a permit. I didn't see any technical issue with view, blocking the view, or other matters that complaining people, they brought up today. I was really anxious to see somebody to come and talk something technical, numbers. This neighbor says, "They are looking to our bedrooms and privacy." What can I say?
Thank you, Mr. Hagelbien.
Thank you.
Any questions for-
I, yeah, Mr. Hagelbien, you know, the, one of the issues here, and we were quite adamant last time, was for you to meet a number of the neighbors that had concerns and so forth. And when I'm listening and hearing what these neighbors are talking about, with the exception of one or two references to technical stuff, which I'm not a preview to approve or not approve, we have a city that is very, very good at that stuff. But these arise from the fact that you have not met with your neighbors ahead of time at the very least to be able to allay their concerns to some extent and to have these conversations that you're having with us. You know, I think you should have done that regardless of, you know, the sentiments that they were showing, whether it is, you know, it's a sentiment that may be against your personal beliefs or what have you. I think they, we, as a neighbor, we owed it to them, to meet with them and to hash out these differences, these problems that right now I'm hearing them voice. I mean, you know, when somebody comes out here and shows me a blue infinity pool on the ridgeline, this is not what your project is. You've tried to be very respectful to the ridgeline. This is not respecting the ridgeline, what you're seeing here, right? And these differences, these misconceptions could have been handled amongst the all of you. So that's all I have to say.
May I respond to that, sir?
Yes.
I was in communication through the emails with the Homes Association person. As I said, once he sent me that email that was included, all the correspondence between neighbors, that was embarrassing for a professional. I don't know why they have to look to an architect like destroyer, bad person. They are not bad person. They are working to construct something nice. However, we delivered the model and the plans 10 days in advance to the city and they had the opportunity to come and check and see the plans. And we were limited to the comments that you made, to make the model, to set back 15 feet, which I don't know how that gentleman calculated that 15 feet is not dead because he doesn't know that our property line, our front edge is here, not here. This is side property line for us. It's side property. Our line is here. As I said, I am having always meetings with the neighbors, especially, we chase Homes Association people. Hours and hours, we sit and talk for other projects. But this one was, I don't know how to put in English words, but was embarrassing.
Commissioner, can I? Question? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hagelbien.
Thank you, sir.
You had your opportunity, so.
I don't have a card. Can I approach the desk?
And then, in all fairness, then you have to give-
You have another rebuttal. You know what? You want to do that? Okay, just state your name. You need to fill out the card after you speak.
After?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. My name is Kevin Asturian. That was my wife, Adina Asturian.
Now we're related, yes.
There has been so many words about incursion in that property that was not done intentionally. I built that deck back in 2006 and there was some marks on the canyon that I was thinking, "That is my property. That's my property line." And the gentleman, the owner, did not say anything about that deck being built till a year and a half ago. When he approached me, he said that, "You know that you're in my property." And I said, "No, I don't." And he said, "Yeah, that's my property going all the way there." He's referring to about two and a half feet overhang on the deck, which I'll be glad to cut it and move my glasses back to my property. And, you know, I didn't appreciate, you know, that he did not approach us as a neighbor to ask us that, "This is what I'm going to do. Is it okay with you?" He didn't, I offered him, I said, "I'm going to buy that property, that piece of property, property from you even if I need to." But it's been a year and a half that he hasn't answered my phone calls. I tried to reach him so many times. And, you know, for the architect to stand here and use incursion for 10, 12 times, you know, that was not done intentionally. And whatever needs to be done, I will glad to do that. So, that's all I need to clarify that.
Would you like to have any rebuttal to that? Would you like to have any rebuttal to that? While he's allowed.
Mr. Hagobian, if you are going to respond to the encroachment, I personally have no interest in listening and hearing about the encroachment. There is anything else, because you got additional times.
No, except that the owner has been very kind to him, that's all.
Okay, thank you, okay. So that wraps up the public hearing. We're now closed with the public hearing. Okay, now we're going to deliberation by commissioners.
Yeah, it was given to the planning commissioner. This one.
Yeah, they have it, not that big, but they have it.
They have it, not that big. But all the technical details are drawn and drawn.
Yeah, we're, we're in session here. So Commissioner Manukian.
This is one of those situations that I suspect that even if we give additional time to the parties, to the applicant and the neighbors, unfortunately, this happens when, when there are, there's intractable differences between parties, when the neighbors are used to a status quo that basically does not infringe in any way, shape, or form on their, on their quality of life, and does not put any sort of responsibility on them. Simultaneously, you have an owner who wants to build, and quite honestly, has a right to build. And here we are, trying to reconcile these two, two opposing, two opposing sides. My perspective is, the owner is, as I understand it, understand it, and I try to confirm that, asking for one variance and one exception. No, two, two exceptions and one variance. Although there's no qualitative, quantitative standard as to how many exceptions and variances you can have, you know, the more, the less merry, I suspect. One variance to exception is not that many. In terms of what this property looks like, that is more of a design review issue than that which pertains to this body. In terms of the view from the back end, let's not kid ourselves, it does affect all those who drive on Camino San Rafael. They, they will see it. It will be very clear. I'm sort of surprised that on many occasions, we were told, "Well, it's public land." It doesn't matter? That, that's precisely why it matters, because it's public land, and people do see it. And here's one instance where the right of the one, within context, outweighs the right of the many. Property rights are one of those issues that matter, particularly to this commission. I've always thought it wise for property owners who come to vacant lands and want to build to, you know, circulate a flyer to their neighbors saying, "I'm gonna build here. If you don't want me to build, put together your money and buy this lot, so I don't build. Otherwise, I'm gonna build." And that is, quite honestly, the only thing that you can do. If you don't want that property built upon, put together your money, buy it, and then dedicate it back to the city, or dedicate it to a foundation or something such that it won't be built on, because I guarantee to you, and I hope other people are listening to this out there in TV land, every vacant land in Glendale will be built on. If, if it bothers you, buy it. Don't let it be built on. Otherwise, somebody will build it. That is the nature of the real estate market in Glendale. I don't hold that against the owner, just like I don't hold any, I hold it against any other property owner who comes before this commission and asks for variances or exceptions to improve and enlarge their properties. It's your, it's your property. You should be able to do something with it within reason, as delineated in our codes and ordinances. So with that, and, and I wanted for the record, because Mr. Asaturian made a point that, "I'm not related to these people," or this and that, the other. I know some of you out there. I know you on both sides. But the reality of it is, there has to be a reconciliation. I looked at all of these letters, and there was only one that referenced any sort of real structural issue that this construction would have. And even that, during the discussions, was, for the most part, rebutted. So all we are left with is the aesthetic. And that is not the basis for us to deny a property owner in building on their property. I think I made myself clear.
Thank you, Commissioner Manukian. Commissioner Astorian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Toddler, does the city of Glendale have a view ordinance?
No.
Do we need to open the public hearing again? We're in deliberation.
Then, then I do need to ask some questions, if you won't mind. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, we do not.
We don't have a view ordinance.
We don't have a view protection ordinance.
We do not have a view protection ordinance.
Are you done with the staff?
Allow me, indulge me for a couple of, two or three more minutes. Can you, real quickly, I mean, I know you're very astute in the work that you do, differentiate between the hillside ordinance and the hillside guidelines? And there is a reason behind the insanity. So that's, if you can give me a real quick synopsis of the both for the benefit of the public.
Yeah, when the hillside ordinance was approved, it's actually modifications to two different sections in our code, Title 30 as well as Title 16. That's subdivisions and zoning. And as part of the hillside ordinance, we have restrictions on what you can do for subdivisions for construction, and you can find those, those findings in, if you look at 3011, you'll see in that, in that chapter of the zoning code, restrictions related to hillside development and consideration that must be made when you have a development in hillsides. Title 16 also has additional restrictions on building in secondary ridge lines, building in bluestone stream areas, or building on primary ridge lines. And so together, taken as a whole, those are the code requirements for the hillside ordinance. Guidelines are different. Guidelines give you design guidance, but they're not a requirement of the code. I mean, they're, they're definitely suggestions on how to design to be consistent with hillsides and to, and to minimize impacts. But they are just, they are guidelines. As long as you consider them, then that's all that's required. They're not a hard and fast rule that you must follow. Ordinance is different. If it's written in an ordinance that you shall do something, well, that's a code requirement. Everybody is, is, has to do that. So, I mean, there, there is a difference between the two, but they do work together.
So when, when the staff recommends approval of the project, in, in, in the mind of the staff, in the research of the staff, this project has met, at the very minimum, the spirit of the guidelines?
Yes. When we look at it, we're looking at it for the code as well as the guidelines. And I realize your purview isn't the design review board, but there's absolutely design aspects and site characteristics that are implied in this, in this development. And so that, when we look at it, we're looking at it as a whole. We know design review is actually gonna look at the building as well. But we're looking in terms of, is, does it make the sense where they're citing the building? And are the variances that are code exceptions that they're asking for, are they allowing for use, are they giving a grant of approval that exceeds what other properties have in the area? Or is what they're asking for something that allows them to enjoy their property consistent with the uses that other properties enjoy in the area? Is there something about this property that constrains it? Are they asking for a variance that accept, that addresses that constraint so everybody has a similar property enjoyment? So we don't want to give somebody additional rights. We want to give them rights so they can enjoy, just like other people, if that, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Yes, I'm done with this.
Cause of public hearing again?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Debatation, please.
So, you know, I was trying to very quickly go through all these letters that was handed to us in the last minute. And, yeah, I came across, and, and these really are not only words, they represent some of the, the ideas that you had in the letter. Incongruent, as if the prop, the, the, the structure that is being built is incongruent with its surround, surrounding. Number of variances. We're finding out that really there are two exceptions and one, one variance here. Detached garage. And it is my understanding that the, the way that this is said, was said, this is why the garage goes inside the hill, because that's one of the requirements, I believe, right? In the, in the, well, you, you don't need to answer me. But what really popped up a lot, and this is, you know, in, this I was disappointed. The lack of the meeting that the applicant should have had with the neighborhood. Because at least seven or eight of you have referenced that. And, you know, that's not a pretty thing. It should have been done, regardless of how bad we felt or how bad we didn't feel. Folks, there is no view ordinance in the city of Glendale, in our codes. While I may, and, and this is the fact, while I may enjoy my neighbor's lot next door, look at the deer walking in there, that doesn't mean that I have the right to, well, I do have the right to, you know, be vociferous and say whatever I want to for that lot not to be built. But the, the neighbor also has the right to be able to build on it, regardless of how, if or not I am going to be enjoying or is going to stop my enjoyment of the view. So there are, as far as the view conversation is concerned, I really can't buy into that. The applicant has already told us that the garage, as opposed to the 15 feet, it's going to be down to 12 feet. And the front setbacks are going to be within what the code requires. I mean, there is no ifs and buts. There is not five foot here and six foot there, that they have to meet the code. So I'm, I'm okay with that as well. When I'm handed an infinity pool that really demolishes a ridgeline, and, and I compare it to what this applicant has done, I believe that they have been very respectful to the ridgeline, and that is important. That is important in our ordinance and our guidelines, also in the ridgeline code, so to say. So I'm seeing all of this, and I'm trying to juxtapose it against your concerns, and I'm looking at the findings. For a moment or two, I had an issue with the finding B. And that's all we need to do, by the way. If one of these findings, I can't find for it, I can deny the application, basically. But the more I look at it, the more in-depth I read it, I think these findings can be made for the exception and for the variance. Those are my thoughts, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, commissioners. As you heard by other commissioners, what's here before us is the one variance and two exceptions. A lot of the comments that, your concerns that you addressed will be readdressed in the design review. And they are not asking for variances of those things, so they have to comply. So, but I am appalled that your emotions got better of you and did not reach out. This commission did ask you to reach out to the neighbor, to talk to them, communicate with them. You still have that chance, because you will need to go through the design review to address all these questions that your neighbors have. Hopefully, that you come to better senses and talk to your neighbors and go over these things that they are concerned about. Because this commission, right now, we're really given the, you know, what, what we have to decide on is to really, can the developer, the owner, build on this lot? And that's what we have, with one variance and two exceptions. So with that, I am going with my fellow commissioners. So I'm ready to entertain the motion.
I'll make the motion that the planning commission of the city of Glendale, after having reviewed the November 18, 2015 staff report and February 17, 2016 staff report, then them from the Planning and Neighborhood Services Division concerning requests for standard variance for 2,596 square feet, single-family resident and detached 441 square feet two-car garage at 4,000 Bouquet Street, to permit a reduced interior setback of five feet on a lot with a secondary ridge line, and to permit an exception to the development standards for properties with secondary ridge lines to allow development of a flat roof where a pitched roof design is required for a single-family residence and garage, where after having conducted a public hearing relative to the request and standard variance and exception to Title 16, the planning commission hereby grants the standard variance and exception, Title 16, based upon the following findings and conditions, and there is a number of findings that are in there, with the exception that the, also to be added to this, Ms. Toddler, is that the garage needs to be at 12 feet.
Commissioner Astorian, could we also add an, would you also add an amendment, please, that would mention, I believe I didn't include the height in the motion, so it's the exception not only for the flat roof, but also to, for the height?
For the height of the garage?
The height, of the overall height within the secondary ridge line for the house.
Yes.
Exactly.
Thank you, Ms. Toddler. Looking for support?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Astorian.
Yes.
Manukian.
Aye.
Chairperson Lee.
Aye, with a vote of three, it passes. Okay, next we have community development department updates.
We have no updates.
Okay, comments from commissioners?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm wondering, what we saw today in terms of the applicant and the neighborhood not communicating with each other, regardless of what we have to say, what was lacking was an interlocutor between the two of them. Is there any way that we can assign a city staffer, as if you don't have enough to do, to be that, that bridge? So that, because I gotta tell you, although I completely understand that, that applicant's architect was so upset with what he read, that he just said, "Forget these people." I, as a, as an attorney, for instance, when I have situations where I have to act as a go-between between my client and my opponent, I swallow my pride. I erase everything that preceded the emails in question that call my client all manner of names, and only send the invitation, right? Or I may actually rewrite it in my own words and then send it. Why? Because I want this thing to happen. Here we have a situation where unfortunately, emotions got the better of, of the reader. So is there a way of appointing a third-party interlocutor in this process?
Well, I can tell you what normally happens is, we will not, we don't form the meeting on behalf of a private applicant, because then you're using essentially public funds for a project. We don't do that. But we do show up at a meeting. If, if the owner or homeowners hold a meeting and invite us, we will be at the meeting.
I see.
So that's generally the way we do it. We, I do know in this case, we did get an inquiry from, I believe it was a homeowners association, wanting the com, wanting the names and phone numbers and emails of everybody who testified at the previous hearing. However, we do have privacy concerns, so we weigh public records requests with, is it a need-to-know the information? What we will release are names and, names of residents who've come in, come forward, and the street address that they are, that they've given. We don't give any other personal information out. However, we would, we always work with the homeowners association. If they do contact us, we're happy to work with them. But we will not give out private information.
Okay.
We're precluded from it.
Second question. How did that UFO land on top of that ridgeline? How did that happen? So you know, that infinity pool at night lights up. There, there's LED lighting on the side of it. I mean, I personally go along with its sentiment because it's red, blue, and orange, you know, the Armenian tricolor. But from the freeway, it looks like a UFO descending. So I'm just wondering, how did that happen?
I have no idea. Where is that at?
It's at the end of Dublin. On Emerald Isle and Dublin.
It's at the end of Dublin, on Emerald Isle and Dublin.
Yeah, we'd have to go take a look.
If you go, take the, to north right now, you will see it, from the freeway.
Commissioner Minnichan, I guess the staff will look into that and then report back to us.
Let me just make one more comment. Mr. Corbett gave us a list with the names of some of the neighbors, phone numbers and so forth. And I venture to think they don't want this phone numbers to go all over the place. I don't know how you're gonna protect it, or there is a way of doing it. Somebody did.
Yeah, no, that, when those are submitted to us, those become part of the public record. They go in the file. If somebody does show up at the counter, they're allowed to look at the file. But those are things we don't, we won't email out somebody. Somebody makes a public information request, and they ask for names and phone numbers and personal information, we'll redact it.
By the way, for the record, it was not Ms. Corbett. It was a Rosemary LaSonne who submitted it as an attachment to her email.
Yeah, but I mean, if you, everything that we receive, we make sure to give you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I have a comment also. It's nothing to do with our case. We do have very important people here in the islands. They are from City of Bowen. They are friendly cities. We have Mayor Chung Sanghyuk from Bowen City, and Mr. Joe and Mr. Han. So welcome to the city of Glendale. And they are also part of the programs that, when we do the commemoration of Comfort Movement Day in July. So I just wanted to shout out to Mayor Chung for sitting and kind of listening in to our democratic process here.
I'm sure, I'm sure they enjoyed every bit of it.
They had nothing better to do.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'd like to entertain motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Okay.